We're just waiting for one more commissioner before we can get started so we can have quorum. Meeting. I will go over the rules and procedures before we get started. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decisions on all matters before the commission, other than the site plans and subdivision plots, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed a five-minute for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll move.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Any abstentions, same sign. Any pass? Thank you. We have one public hearing consent item tonight, with potentially moving a couple of others, but I'll start with the first one. Item number one is a request from Lila Vendary for review and approval of a public hearing site plan for a property located at 5,000 Southwest 9th Street, and for a Type 2 design alternative to allow a dumpster enclosure to be located in the street side yard when it's required to be located in the rear yard. Is there anyone in the public who would like to hear this item tonight? Anyone from the commission? The item will remain on consent. There is a potential for item three to be moved to the consent agenda as well. Item three is a request from Pacific Star Comm, Inc., for the following regarding portions of two parcels located in the vicinity of 3,900 East Broadway Avenue. A) Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM. B) To amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use classification of the property from low-density residential to community mixed-use. And C) To rezon property from N-2A Neighborhood District to MX-3 Mixed-Use District to allow a proposed industrial service-light use. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull this item from consent or keep it on the public hearing agenda? Anyone from the commission? Seeing none, the item will be moved to the consent agenda. And there's also a potential for item number four to be moved, which is a request from LG Enterprises LLC for the following regarding property located in the vicinity of 3,108 Southwest 9th Street. A) Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM. And B) To rezon the property from limited MX-1 Mixed-Use District to limited MX-1 Mixed-Use District to remove the zoning condition that prohibits any sale of or service of alcohol, liquor, wine, and/or beer on the property. Is there anyone on the audience who would like to keep this item on the public hearing? Anyone on the commission? Seeing none, the item will also be moved to the consent agenda. With that, we have three items on the consent agenda. Item number one, number three, and number four. I will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes. Okay, so we'll have one item on the public hearing agenda tonight. That is item number two. A request from Sterling Investments LLC for the following regarding property located at 1701 Pennsylvania Avenue. A) Determination as to whether the requested rezoning is in conformance with the Plan DSM. B) To rezon the property from N-5 Neighborhood District to N-5-2 Neighborhood District to allow use of the property for two household dwelling units. Catherine will be presenting from staff.
Chair, members of the commission, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines. As mentioned, the property is located at 1701 Pennsylvania Avenue, which is and is located on the corner with Cherokee Avenue. To the north of the property is East Jefferson Avenue. It's a small, one-lane paved street. You'll see a little bit of an example in the site photos in a minute. And then, of note, Pennsylvania Avenue is a while it's still considered a residential street, it is a higher occupancy residential street and averages between 3,000 and 12,000 cars a day. So it's considered a slightly busier street than the rest of the neighborhood. Some site photos, these were taken from East Jefferson Avenue, heading east. And so essentially, the north side or the rear of the carriage house under discussion. And then, the applicant provided us with some drawings. I scaled down to show the site drawing and then just the exterior. To the left is a rendering of the existing conditions. To the right is the proposal. And then, both of these are proposed facades, as well as proposed facades. The applicant is looking to rezon to allow that carriage house to be renovated and utilized as a rental unit. The applicant is not, does not live at this residence. It is not occupied owned. Were it to be occupied owned and a little bit closer to DART route, it would be considered by right for an accessory dwelling, or excuse me, household unit. But in this case, the rezoning is required to have the dash-two extension added on to allow for two dwelling units. I would also mention that, I'm going to go back up to the area map. This is a significantly larger corner lot. The original, we don't show the original lot lines on here, but that parcel is equivalent to nearly three independent lots from the original plat. And so essentially, if you were to move it to the east, it would cover three of those same lot sizes to the east. So three houses to the, of comparable size would fit on this lot. For all of these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request to rezon to N-5-2. We did receive quite a few cards back from the notification process. I'd also note at this time that we had a little glitch with the GIS tool that we used around our mailing list. Thankfully, the neighbors actually noticed it during the communication process and they're the ones who alerted us to the issues that we had. So not all of the properties in this impacted area were originally notified, but we sent out notifications once we were aware. And we're working with GIS to make corrections to the process that caused a few houses not to receive the original notification. And also, the Neighborhood Association didn't receive first communication. But everyone did eventually receive communication. So we'll go through the cards. The scans are all a little bit different sizes. I can slow down or go back to anything, so if I go too quickly, just let me know. These were attachments to the previous email.
Can you, I'm sorry, do you mind going back to the last email for a quick second?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Is that second to last paragraph correct?
So the appeal before us tonight is the rezoning because the applicant would like to renovate the carriage house and utilize it as a rental unit. He does not live on site, so it-
Oh, sorry, I'm meaning the 1% for $1 thing that seems like-
We, yeah, I mean, you can ask applicant about that, but that's not, we don't have what we know about is what we're seeing, so I-
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to figure it. Do we know whether or not this email is accurate or not?
No, we don't.
Okay. Was the page before the answer? What's the page before?
The page before this one? I can zoom in.
Can you just kind of explain what we're looking at here?
I'm going to let Jason-
Yeah, I mean, this is information provided by a resident. This is a quick claim deed. I, we have not-
It is on the city assessor's page.
Okay, but it's ownership information, but then the day, we have a request to rezon the property and they've signed, you know, the owner, as we recognize, is, you know, signed to seek rezoning. I can leave that, you know, the applicant, if he wants to address what the purpose of this quick claim deed was and the accusations from neighbors, that's his choice, but the matter before us is to decide whether or not we think two units is appropriate for the property.
Would you like to address it now, us to address it now?
When you have the opportunity to speak, you can address it.
And then, this is the letter we received from the Union Park Neighborhood Association. The applicant did provide us with the neighborhood summary about the meeting he had. So, past Saturday would have been March 23rd. And then, a copy of the mailer he sent out. And then, if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer them.
If we don't approve this zoning request, do they have any other relief?
Typically with, I'm going to, Jason, I think, wants to handle it. Is that what you were doing?
That's okay, probably, I, actually, I, part of my thinking is I have a question for you, Catherine. But, yeah, I just want to clarify. The commission will be making a recommendation to City Council, so the council would be, would be the body that would make the decision. But the council elects to not approve the request, then yes, the applicant could seek a use variance. That's a difficult, I mean, that's a hard case to make, but that is out there. The question I had, Catherine, I believe, does this, this will require a supermajority vote at council?
This will require a supermajority vote at council. We had sufficient, both a combination of sufficient opposition received through the notification process, as well as there's enough public land within the notification area that this actually reduces the supermajority trigger from 20% to 15% opposition. So, and due to the plots around, along the riverbank, the, as you can see, the opposition was at 30%. So even without the public land, it would have still required the supermajority vote.
So the carriage house has been there. It's been used for a garage.
As we understand, it's generally been utilized for a garage and storage. And I believe, forgive me, it's been a little bit since I looked at the assessor's website, but I believe this was built around 1900 or so, maybe 1920.
Just as a point of comparison, when we have similar requests over on Historic Neighborhood by Sherman Hill, thank you. Is that approved because of the connection to DART? Or do they have to go through the same process?
Jason, are you indicating you want to cover this or you want me to?
Well, I didn't, you know, I mean, if you know, you go ahead.
I can do, why don't you jump in if I don't cover it all? But, so with any, with a request for an AHU, it can be approved by right if it is owner-occupied and it, within a quarter mile of a DART route. In this case, the property is not owner-occupied and it's more than a quarter mile from a DART route. It's close, but it's not at a quarter mile. And so, in Sherman Hill, it's probably a smaller area and I think there might actually be more bus routes running within the general area since it's closer to downtown and, and much more major corridors through the city. So I think with Sherman Hill, you see that sometimes these are, might go through a little bit differently than this one does, but they still have to be reviewed. And then also with Sherman Hill, they would have to go through the Historic Preservation Commission review process.
They have to meet both requirements, not either or.
They'd have to meet-
Well, the other thing too to keep in mind is much of Sherman Hill is zoned for multifamily use. And it was even so under the old code. So it's, it hasn't had single-family, some of it is, but a lot, most of that neighborhood is zoned multifamily, you know, for multifamily use. So it wouldn't even matter.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Not, the applicant has 10 minutes to present. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and sign in afterwards.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
David Barzen, and so, I fell in love with this old house back in 2003 when one of my classmates told me his last grandparent had just passed away and she lived in this old house on the east side at 1701 Pennsylvania Avenue. I walked in, I fell in love with it, decided to buy the house. Unfortunately, nothing had been maintained on the house for a long, long, long time. And so, my contractor that's behind me here, he's been working on the house since 2004. We had to rebuild all of the porches around the house. We had to redo all the electrical, all of the plumbing. I've spent over a million dollars already on the house in addition to buying it. And I had rented it out for a while and then the, well, part of my addiction to the house is I'm also a president of the Des Moines Historical Society. I've been president for about eight years. And I rented it out for a while and then the condition of the carriage house was such that they revoked the rental certificate. And so, I could not rent it anymore. And that's when I started doing the 1% ownership to allow somebody living in there to be an owner, to allow that to happen. Well, they wouldn't let me restore the carriage house unless I moved it. And so, it was built, it says 1900 on the assessor's site. I think it was built the same year as the house, which was 1890. The assessor's site says 1896 on that too. But, so, fall of '22, we ended up having to lift the carriage house, move it five feet one direction to get it off the neighbor's property line, move it 10 feet the other direction to get it off of the city right away in the alley, put it down on a new foundation. And then, the sides of the carriage house had all failed over the years because the footing had all fallen outward. And as that happened, all the sides rotted. And so, we had to pull the sides back in, rebuild the sides, do a new footing, do a new concrete floor in there. And so, we now got that part done. And so, now we're hoping to develop to do something with the second floor and turn it into usable space. I own a number of different properties in that neighborhood. I am a big believer of trying to restore everything back to the original condition it was when it was built. And so, I find a lot of old houses that are being torn down and take the woodwork out, the staircases, and put those into the houses that I restore. And so, I spend way more money on these houses in the neighborhood than they're worth, but that's my love affair. And so, I live in a 1924 house myself and my love affair is 1890 to 1920. And so, I've done a lot of that over the years and I'm hoping to, I spent a lot of money on the house, getting it in great shape, and now I'm trying to get the carriage house put in good shape and love to be able to utilize that as additional space for my thought process, since I bought the house, is it's such a beautiful house and it's in a little bit of an odd location for residential, being on the busy street and not a lot of other houses directly against it. But I always wanted to share the house with the community. As president of Des Moines Historical Society, we've had a number of our meetings there. We've had some music and art stuff going on in the house, but my whole thing has been, let's share the house with the city, with the neighborhood, get people into Union Park to see what a beautiful neighborhood it is. And it's just, when we had our meeting a few weeks ago, I was really hoping that we'd get a lot of neighbors to show up and ask me questions and bring about their concerns. We had two people show. And so, that was a little bit disheartening to then see the responses that I've gotten from some of the neighbors. So, but, trying to think what else to say. Would you like to come out and say anything, Matt? Okay. So, again, David Barzen, address 420 51st Street in Des Moines.
My name is Matt Frieders. I'm a remodeling contractor. I've been a remodeling contractor for going on 35 years now. I met Dave when I renovated his house that he lives on 51st Street. I read through some of the comments that the neighbors sent in, comments about a flop house, comments about turning things into rentals and, and having that make the neighborhood evolve. I can tell you from personal experience, I've worked on almost every house that Davis bought. The vast majority of them started out as multifamily houses that had been converted into multifamily houses. They've bought them and paid me way more money than the houses were worth to turn them back into single-family homes so that a single family could live there. And the goal with this house, and I've worked on this house since Dave bought it in 2004, the goal with this house was always to convert it into a, to a bed and breakfast. And the kind of the thought process behind being able to utilize the upstairs of the carriage house was so that the host family would have a place to live on the property while the rooms were rented as a bed and breakfast. Dave's properties, we could bring in pictures of the properties that he's renovated and, and they are nice. And they are not being rented out to, he's not a slumlord. They're being rented out to good tenants and they're an improvement to the community rather than what a lot of the comments might lead you to believe. So I just wanted to say that. And I wanted to say that, that Dave has the best interests of this house and this carriage house and the neighborhood at heart. And he has the best interest of preserving the historical value of every home that he buys, not just this one. So, and I've witnessed that firsthand over the last 25 years. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Please sign in on the, there's a white sheet, maybe it's not there. We will pass it over to you once-
Looks like we don't have this.
Okay.
Is there, wait, ask a question or is it?
Yes, go ahead.
It's pretty consistent consternation. What's the source? Like, why is it, why is there, why is there, I mean, there's a high percentage opposed to this with arguments that it's not keeping up to character. What is the source of the consternation? What's-
You know, I do not know. You know, we've, as we've tried to share the house, we've done music and art events out of the house so people can get in and see it. And they've always been very well attended. A lot of the neighbors show up. And I've been doing that because I haven't legally been able to rent it without the rental certificate. And so, for the last few years, I've just been spending money restoring it and then using it for that purpose. And I'm not sure where this is coming from. Jack Doherty, which is one of the ones that lives across the street, also owns Captain Roy's. And so, he does a lot of music and art events down there. And so, I assume that he was on board with what I was doing because he's bringing people in the neighborhood through that. And I'm trying to do the same thing with this old beautiful Victorian house that's cost me way more money than I should be putting into a house, especially in Union Park. But, like I said, it's my love affair and I've tried to, every improvement that I've done to the house, I've tried to make sure it looks like it was always there. done to the house, I've tried to make sure it looks like it was always there. So, but...
Yeah, I mean, I'm personally a fan of this proposal. I like carriage houses, I like higher density, I like the way that it looks like it's, I mean, as everyone knows, I'm a big fan of San Francisco's approach where it doesn't have to be like 1800s, we aren't 1800s anymore. I just, it seems odd that there's such a big block of red for something that seems like everything is on the up and up and positive, yet there's such consistent, that's, I'm just curious if there's something that can be done to mend fences here, it seems odd.
Yes, I'm concerned, Jack Doherty wrote, as you can see, he wrote a letter in opposition to this.
Yep.
Can you explain that? So, from the moment I bought the house, Jack really wanted a family living in that house. He didn't want it to be used for anything else. And so originally when I bought it, the people I bought it from had the idea of turning it into bed and breakfast. They went out and bought antiques, filled up the house with antiques, did all that, and unfortunately, they both ended up passing away before they got it done. So that was my intention also, and, but the, it took many, many, many years of doing all of this restoration work to even make it sensible to even have it be a rental, let alone a bed and breakfast. And so, you know, it has not been a family living there, which is what Jack wanted all along, and that's, I think, really his opposition, is he's mad that it's not a family living across the street from his house. So, and I like Jack, but, you know, we've just been opposed, you know, I've been a believer of sharing the house with the public, and he's been wanting it to be a single family where nobody would ever get in it and see the inside. So your purpose would be to have a duplex, an Airbnb, is that correct? So, yeah, my plan is to have an Airbnb in the house, and then whoever is caretaking the Airbnb would live in the carriage house. And how many family units would be occupying the rental? Just one, just one. I, years ago, I had done it as an Airbnb where I was renting it by the room, and I didn't like the way that felt, I didn't like the way that, that mixture of people, and so my plan is to have an Airbnb, be the entire house, and so somebody that's coming in for a family reunion, or a wedding, or whatever, they can all fill up the house with one family unit, and not do individual rooms like I had done years ago, and I just, like I said, I didn't like how that felt, or how, how, the amount of effort of trying to take care of, you know, five bedrooms separately was ridiculous, so. Thank you. Yep.
So if you get denied tonight, and you get denied by City Council, and you can't get a use variance, what we, what would you do with the house? Would you keep it and just...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm in deep, so I won't be getting rid of the house. You know, it's, the carriage house now is at a point that we can turn it back into just a garage, and then, once that's done, then the house will be able to pass rental inspection, and I'll be able to get a rental certificate on it. And so I'd still be able to do Airbnb on the house, I just wouldn't be able to do it with the carriage house. And I just think that the carriage house, when I bought it, that it was a solid back wall on the park, and I thought, how ridiculous, that park is so gorgeous. And so I added a two-car garage door opening on the alley side facing the park, and then I wanted to add the balconies, one overlooking the yard, and then another one overlooking the park, so it opened up the park to the carriage house, and be able to view that from the second floor of the carriage house, and have actually French doors facing both sides that would open up onto a balcony. And then the balcony, it doesn't show it in the pictures, but there's a balcony on the third floor of the carriage house right now that has old-fashioned spindles that match the spuns, type of spindles on the porch, and so I want to get artistic iron to make it set for both the front and the back. Yeah, if you want to go to...
For the existing house, David, not your...
Yeah, I'm sorry, the current house. If you go down a little bit further, yeah, so that opening that you're seeing in the picture right now, that opening wasn't there, that was a solid wall. And so we opened that up, and then this picture here shows what it looks like now on the left, and then the right hand would be adding an extra roof line so that we could have enough room for the patio doors and the porch on the side. This is the side that faces the front, kind of towards the front of the street of the house, and then the back. The only thing that's different on the lower picture in this is that instead of a single door, we ended up doing a double door to make it easier to get in and out of the garage from the alleyway. The front side with the, on the right-hand side picture, it's really hard to get in and out of those doors because you don't have a big turnaround in front of that, and so I still wanted it to look the same as what was there originally, but I wanted to be able to have it be more usable by having the main entry be on the backside. So, and it's like I said, the balconies, the way that we've got it designed is the balconies would be on the front and the back. The one on the bottom left hand is the, actually the side that faces the park. So, and there's, they never built any porches on the backside of the house that faced the park, and again, the carriage house was set up really for horses, so the upstairs of the carriage house is where they would keep all the hay, and there's actually doors in there where they would put the hay into the horses, and then the horses and the carriages would be down below. So, I even actually have, Reese Gabriel is the guy that built the house in 1890, he owned 37 lumber yards around the state of Iowa, and actually, in the carriage house, I still have the old safe that he had from the 1890s. And so, and that, that will of course stay with the house. So, but, yeah, it's been, it's been a gigantic money pit, but, but I guess it's, it's better than a crack cocaine addiction or something. I don't know. But, but yeah, I'm, like I said, I'm all about keeping the character and even the stuff on the inside, the staircase going up to the second floor. Last year, I found an old staircase that was torn out of a house in southern Iowa that's got the same kind of Victorian design as lots of the rest of the house that I was planning on putting back in. I found a, an old loveseat that was built into a staircase over in Dubuque. I drove over and picked that up and brought it back. All that is quarter sun oak, which matches all the quarter sun oak in the rest of the house.
Is there a chance for a clarifying question?
Sure.
So just to make sure I'm understanding, so the reason that the change is needed, I guess I'm trying to follow Emily's question, so if this is denied, what you're saying is you would have to have, the carriage house would be uninhabitable, I guess, in order to actually meet your rental certificate? Is that what we're saying, or?
I'm at a point now that I could get the rental certificate again, so that would not be a problem. The carriage house has been restored to the point that, once they put doors on it, it would be ready to be a garage again, and then I could get the rental certificate. But the reason that I haven't had a rental certificate for the last few years is because the carriage house is such bad shape that it actually ended up getting put on the nuisance list, and so they wanted it either torn down or restored, and so I decided to spend the money to move it and restore it instead of tearing it down. So...
Okay, so I'm a little confused, so basically, if you restore this carriage house the way we are right now, it could be restored, you just couldn't rent it? Or we're saying that, I guess that's...
It can't, it can't be occupied as a separate dwelling unit without the change in zoning. So I think, just to, if, if the applicant's not successful in getting the rezoning approved, and there's no other, you know, variance grant, you know, by the Board of Justice or something like that, his option is to have a dwelling unit in the house, and then this continue, can continue to be used as an accessory structure with no living quarters in it. So, you know, it's for cars, it's second-floor storage, just, it's just a, you know, big garage at that point.
Two-story garage.
Yeah.
Could, since it's a, the house is on three lots, would that be an option too, where that, the lot where the carriage house sits could be subdivided as its own lot, and then everything is legit?
That's possible. We'd have to, I don't, I can't give you a definitive answer tonight, we'd have to look into it, but it is possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you say, is there, who's living there right now? Is there someone living there right now?
No. No.
The house, sorry.
No, no one's living in the house right now, so. Yeah, I gotta get the rental certificate before somebody can be living there and have it rented again. So, and again, I haven't been able to do that for years because of the condition of the carriage house, so I got that part done, and I'm trying for the next. So, 'cause I just think that it's, it's such a beautiful house and lot and location that I just think that it would be a really cool project to take on, and again, it's probably going to cost me, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars to do the carriage house, but it would be something that then, you know, would be, I think, a better use of the second floor of the carriage house than just storage space. And you can see in this picture the hay door right there above the garage door where they put the hay in and out. So, but, and we've, in restoring that, we rebuilt the foundation of it to match the original. We did a block foundation, but then we found some brick that matches the brick on the house so that we could put the same look foundation around the perimeter of it. We put in marvin windows everywhere where the original windows were. The ones that were there were rotted beyond use, and then Matt built all of the siding, so everything from that, if you look underneath the hay door, there's a flat board that runs right below that. Everything from that flat board down is all new siding that he made to match the existing siding on the carriage house, and we actually made that out of red grandis, which is a kind of wood that doesn't rot, so that way it won't rot in the future like modern wood would. And then, again, all of the structure behind that is all brand-new too, because all of the walls went outward with the foundation, and when that happened, then they caught the rain coming down, and so then all of that rotted, so.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing, I guess I'll go through the motions. Any proponents, opponents, and the public neutral? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and let the commissioners discuss.
I guess I would say I agree with my fellow commissioners. There's something wrong here if the neighbors are that opposed to it. I like what you're doing, you're doing it right, you're using the right materials. Something's just not adding up here, and I don't know what it is. I wish some people from the neighborhood would have actually showed up to have discussed that with you. It's too bad they didn't show up to the meeting. I'm in a little bit of a hard spot where I like your project, but it's tough to go against neighbors, and hopefully, if it doesn't go your way, you could look at parceling out that lot and still get your project done, or go into the city and possibly having another meeting with Jack and those people from the neighborhood to try to get them to turn their opinion. Just something just doesn't make sense, and I hope you can figure it out.
I guess I would, as a counter though, I would say it's always easier to send in a letter and not show, so I guess not showing to me provides a little, a little more credence to the idea that there may be something else there that doesn't go against the fact that seems like a good project, it's the right way we'd want it to do it. It isn't, we say, the nature and type of area, it isn't, you know, it's not like we're cramming McMansion onto a tiny lot, right? This would be something that I guess I would be supportive of staff in the context here. I just raise the issue that it is a pretty large red block, but if no one showed, that to me speaks more than having a large red block.
I received one of the emails, 'cause I know a few of the people, and I know they had to, I know they had to work tonight, so it's not always available for everybody, obviously.
I'm actually in agreement with Chris over here. I have my, thereabouts. I had my doubts also, but this is the time and place for the hearing, and people who are opposed to it should show up, and I understand a lot of people have working, and this is not the best location for coming to hearings. It's not on a bus route either, so I'm inclined to support staff in this matter. I know a lot of people are quite angry, but it's one thing to put something in writing, it's another thing to come up and testify and be questioned, so I'm leaning forward to supporting staff on this.
Is that a motion, or are we still having conversation?
Excuse me, what was that?
Is it a motion? Are you making a motion then, or are we still in conversation?
I'm still in conversation.
Okay.
I'm still in conversation.
Okay, cool.
Well, that's anyone else, that's something to add.
I guess. To add on to what Francis said and Chris, it seems like the house is definitely in the right hands, right? The owner's done everything possible to meet the requirements to make it into a rental property per the city code, and I would rather have somebody living in the carriage house to keep the parties from happening when it's a B and B. If something gets out of hand, you have an owner presence, or at least some type of presence, to shut it down before it gets out of hand. And I'd hate to see it get to a point where it's gonna become a rental, it's gonna become a B and B of whatever the owner wants it to be, and having a presence there in the carriage house, I think alleviates a lot of what I read, had to read really fast in the cards. So I would move staff on this. That is a motion.
Thanks, Todd. We have a motion on the table. Is there some additional amendments or friendly amendments suggested? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Any other director's reports?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll adjutant a motion to adjourn.
Move, adjourn.